Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you into the Big Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, January 12th, 2023. The time is 3:05 PM, and I will do a little call. Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Storseth is on his way. We'll recognize him when he arrives. Councilmember Roderick will also recognize in a moment. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Henderson, but.
I think you think the seniors are.
Yeah, can you send the dark? Councilmember Roderick, my apologies, you're here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
I like saying that.
I like.
Here.
Great, so we will acknowledge Councilmember Storseth when he arrives. And now, we will do our oath of office for Councilmember Julie Martin. Just for the record, she did swear in yesterday afternoon with the city clerk up in the clerk's office, as she has been official since yesterday afternoon. But this is our chance to do our ceremonial swearing in. So Julie, if you would like to join me a little bit. We'll kind of maybe just stand outside of the. The light of the, I don't know, we'll figure it out. It's very bright.
If you turn just that forward, it's.
Oh, there you go. Thank you, Jeff. There, so if we go like about right here.
All right.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll stand this way. And if you raise your right hand, please, repeat after me. I, Julie A. Martin.
I, Julie A. Martin.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington.
Laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Best to my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truthfully faithfully and diligently.
I'm trying to give in small verse. And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties of the Office of City Councilmember.
The duties of the Office of City Councilmember.
For the city of Big Harbor.
For the city of Big Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yes. Hey. So, Councilmember Storseth has arrived.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome. Okay, all seven, present and accounted for. So we will move right into our first discussion item. We are. You have, you know, as you know, till five, so. This is our Get Cover Urban Growth Area Assessment and Guidelines Draft Review. And our report comes to us from our community development director, Carl the Seamus. Where are they? You are welcome, Carl. It's so different than when you just look out at everything. Where are we going? Thank you, Carl, for being here. And then, do you have anyone else with you that you would like to contribute more? Okay.
And thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Today, we're, by, at Council's request, we are bringing back the draft. Urban Growth Area Assessment Guidelines. It's a document that we have been working on. Over the course of 2021 and a little bit into 2022. And we had it pretty well buttoned up with the consultant in early 2022, and it was on the, on the, on the. Program to bring back to council for adoption by resolution. We just hadn't really gotten there, so my plan was to bring it back to you towards the end of the year. And looking at getting it onto an agenda and bringing you a draft resolution and speaking with others on staff. It was brought to my attention that there needed to be some more discussion, particularly around the Drona Links. Area of the, of the urban growth area. And so, we're bringing this back to you today to have that discussion, to find out what. If any concerns there are on, on council's part, and to get some direction on next steps that we need to. Make some amendments to this draft before we bring it back for approval. So with that, I think I've really done some of the questions that you all might have about my concerns and try and see if I can address any of those.
Yeah, and just so. We usually need to do more of a round robin at study sessions, but I think for ease, for the, our new councilperson, and just for me to keep track. I would try to watch for an order of hands, but if you could raise hands, that would be great. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Just a quick question. It says that project's been closed out, consultants, and changes to the document may require a new agreement. Can't we change it, the city?
We, we can't. Okay, what I said.
If you do something small, let's not get.
Depending on what those changes are. Yeah, they're depending on how substantive they are. If it's, if it's removing this from, if, if, if the direction from council is to remove that area from. Or recommended for removal from our urban growth area, so it essentially re-designated within the plan. We would have to do some review of the overall plan and see what effects that might have overall, whether or not we would have to have some consultant help or not.
Okay.
So it's unknown at this point.
But the city has an editable copy if we need to go and, if you guys need to go and fix. Thanks.
And we also have adequate funding within the planning divisional budget that it, that we needed to ask for to come in and amend maps or things like that. That would likely be under the threshold of the city administrator, and we could get that done relatively.
Okay.
Carl, are there, is there specific direction that you're looking for from council today on this, like?
I, I am looking for, yeah, specific direction on whether or not we feel that this document is ready to be brought back for adoption by resolution, or whether or not there's some further study that needs to be done or additional amendments.
Okay, great, Councilmember Roderick.
So what was the concern? The Drona Links. Why is this coming back to us?
Well, it was, it was, if this, that request had been, had come from council, and I'm not sure who on council had that concern. But it was relayed to me that there were some.
So what was their concern?
Were some concerns, whether or not to keep the Drona Links area designated as a long-term management area, or whether or not to designate it as an area to recommend it for removal from our urban growth area.
Well, there must have been some narrative around it. I mean, what was the issue?
It has something to do with Pennant Parks.
Yeah, from what I can recall, Pennant has and is possibly still looking at acquiring the Drona Links at some point in time to use as a park. There is a, there's, there's an agreement already in place that is set to expire in around seven years for just a portion of the golf course, like nine, eight or nine holes or something like that. They're not sure what that family wants to do with their portion of the golf course, and so there's a chance that it could get kind of messy. In terms of, is it gonna stay a golf course? Is it gonna not be a golf course anymore? Does the city want to buy it and make it a park? Is Pennant gonna want to buy it and make it a park? There's, there's just, there's been a lot of. Just kind of back and forth about what would be done with, with the property and who, and, and there's multiple owners, I guess. And so. Adam and Carl, that kind of, if that's accurate still, or?
Well, I think that is, I think that's, that is definitely an accurate statement, that there are multiple entities involved, but the. The area, as you can see up here, is made up of the Drona Links golf course. The main portion of that is actually here. Pennant Parks operates and owns that. The, the parcel to the, to the north. Is owned by, I believe, the family that the mayor was referring to. And then there's the development sort of to the south-east down there. The condo development is obviously something separate. It's all.
Councilmember Roderick.
I wonder if. Carl, if you could talk about the ramifications of leaving it in the UGA, removing it from the UGA.
Yeah.
Versus, I mean, that's, if you, can you remind us of? And I remember we had a lot of discussion about Madrona Links. I don't remember. What the ramifications were of removing it versus leaving it in versus annexing it.
The reason that it was ultimately left in, we had that discussion previously, is that the city would not then have any control over how it was developed. If, if the, the, the consultant spoke a lot about the idea that if the golf course was full, essentially. And this were to be reverted to, you know, a residential zone of some kind. What, what would be done with it at that point? The city wouldn't have any, if we took it out of the UGA, then the city wouldn't have any skin in the game to, to. To review it or to have any say in what might ultimately be developed there. If it's, if it's left as is, or as a, as a golf course as it is now, there's really, there is no detriment to the city necessarily. If it's, and if it's taken, if it's left in our UGA, there's really no detriment to the city. It's, it remains sort of status quo.
What if we remove it? If I may, I was on vacation during the work session when this occurred, and so I listened now back to that and know of the. Concerns that council had, and the decision at the time was to leave the Madrona Links golf course in for the reason that Carl suggested, the consultant indicated there would be more control. I don't particularly find that to be the case. Right now, it's in the urban growth area of the city of the county, right? And so it advised by currently the Pierce County regulations, which we know that there's been several issues with that kind of developments on the periphery, not. Inconsistent with our regulations. So if this were to be developed right now, that would be at five to nine dwelling units per acre. Whereas if it were to be removed, I'm not saying it is going to be developed, but if it were to be developed, that's the type of density that you would be looking at on a golf course. If it were to be removed, we would have the same amount of skin in the game, if you will, because it's still county, but it would be at a rate of one dwelling unit per five acres. So by removing it from the, removing it from the urban growth area, we would expect much lower density to be developed, if it were to be developed.
That's under the current zoning, that it's. Could that change over time? Could the county say, we'd like to zone it for industrial?
If, if we remove it from the urban growth area, they could. Well, they could change the zoning at any time. It would need to go through us for recommendation. If we were to remove it from the urban growth area, it would, there would be much less chance of anything like that happening, because the county has significantly reduced their ability to have. Industrial or commercial in the rural area outside of limited areas of more intensive rural development, which this is not one of.
Does it have some sort of understanding with Pierce County about development regulations, and we have, not necessarily oversight, but we would. We would have input into something that, even though it's in a county, if it was adjacent to the city, we would have input.
When it's in the UGA, we do give those development proposals for review, and so we can provide our comment, but they're still being developed under the county's zoning codes.
And we have not yet formalized the urban growth area management agreement, Councilmember Roderick, that you're talking about. So right now, the, when something comes in in our urban growth area, they're, they're reviewing it specifically under the county guidelines. And our recourse is through the CEPA process, if that's available to us.
That's very interesting.
At the same time, we had a discussion on McCormick Creek, the forest there, and it was under the same issue, but I think everybody agreed. We don't need it in our UGA because it's protected or something, but I remember this just being different, that. We believe we wouldn't have any, we would have less control. If we left it out. I guess I'm not understanding. If you leave it out of the UGA, why would we have more control, or why would Pierce County have less? Opportunity to develop this versus in the UGA? Maybe you could help.
It's, it's equal control unless we annex it. So the, the thing for council's consideration is if we leave it in, the density could be much higher. If we remove it and it were to be developed residentially, it would be a much lower density. So it's equal amount of control. It's just whether or not we want to have that density on this, the lower part of our, of the city. That's really the policy question for council.
Councilmember Lichten. Thank you. So. The goal or the rule of having a UGA is for potential further expansion, to be able to increase. Our numbers, that we would annex these properties within 20 years. Is that right? And so if we had, for example, something come down from the state that said we needed this much, then we would potentially could annex areas. To help meet those requirements. Right? And as it sits right now, I'm reading here on the thing that on Madrona Links has no developmental, no. Developable sites in the UGA. They consider it completely built out. But, so we're counting on the fact that if the golf course were to not be a golf course anymore, what would happen with that property?
Yes, and we understand it. Pennant has an agreement on this property that's not long-term.
Right.
And there is been some development discussion around these properties, and so that changes what was written in the report, because there is development capacity, just not right now. But within the next few years, there may be development capacity on that property.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson, did you go on the other hand?
So it gets developed at a higher density. Who's responsible for the infrastructure, specifically where, where tax are, if we add a new sewer source? Would that be possible if it was developed under the county?
It would be, it would go into our sewer system. So it went to hell under county regulations. Eventually, the city would annex the property, and then we would need to bring it up to city standards. So there would be an increased cost if we were to take it in after.
At the higher density, then it would substantially overtax, or not overtax, may as. Or it would. Put more stress on our existing infrastructure as far as sewer water.
It could. I will say that our public works department is, has sized the wastewater treatment plant for our existing city and UGA. With the asterisk that any potential upzoning or anything that would happen under this next comprehensive plan is not yet. Rolled into that. So your, the answer to your question is. Potentially, yes.
How about water?
I believe that's a gross water system.
Washer and water.
Washing water.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, yeah, good. So i- if we leave it as is, the potential is for higher density and more stress on our infrastructure. And if we, if we let it go back to the county, we're looking at lower density and no. Impact to our infrastructure or less impact to our infrastructure.
Well, if it's in a rural area, they would be able to utilize onsite subjects, so they would not need to connect into our infrastructure. Of course, there would be, I don't know the exact acreage of the. The golf course, but that would be a certain amount of vehicular trips and water required, but at a much less degree.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Oh, me, I'm just.
Mayor, if I may, Carl has. Community Development Director Carl the Seamus has been working with Pierce County. They actually approached the city saying. And this goes back to a discussion that we have been having as a, as a group. Councilmember Roderick will have to get to a dispute on all of this, but. The county, because of development authorizations that they've provided out past Bonny Lake. Can't remember what the large development statement right now. To Holly.
Always.
They are going back under this comprehensive plan cycle and asking each city to reduce the urban growth area. Because they have this additional development capacity. So they have reached out to us and have some areas of reduction, so this would go along with what the county's intentions are. They're wanting us to reduce their own growth area.
Our.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is the county specifically asking us to reduce by Madrona Links, or are they just saying reduce at this point?
So I met with a couple of their planners, and we looked at certain areas. They had a few areas that they were, that they had done research on. And this was one of the areas that came up, one of those research areas, this and the parcel to the south there, just next to the Lighthouse Christian School. That's another one in this area that they were looking at. That's an undeveloped parcel. That's within our UGA, and they have looked at a few other parcels up around. Peacock Hill and near Canarwood as well.
How? Could, this has to be a hypothetical. How could, if we. Remove these from the UGA, which is basically saying. They're not in our control anymore. How could that impact our ability to meet potential state requirements for affordable housing?
At, at, at present time, based on recent buildable land studies, it wouldn't have, wouldn't likely have any impacts, although caveat that with, we don't have all of the numbers in front of us yet. We don't have all of the data quite yet as far as what we're going to need to provide for affordable housing, for instance, relative to area median income. So there's still some factors involved, but what buildable land shows us is that we can meet our growth targets that we've agreed to. Within the region with the lands that we have without annexation.
Would we be more protected if we kept these in our UGA? Protected may not be the right word, but I, I think the.
We have more flexibility.
Yeah.
Sure.
The, the crystal ball to that is, we'll have, kind of wish we'd have one.
Right. We'll have the housing needs assessment completed. We'll have some of the missing middle bills that are going on in the legislature right now. We'll know the outcome of those. More as we're going along in the comp plan cycle. So if we were to remove this now, we can add it back in at some point in the future. And, and those are typical needs that happen in the comp plan process, but as Carl mentioned, the buildable land report did show that we have adequate capacity within the city. To accommodate our housing targets. Now. Again, that's a big caveat of legislation that has been put in this week. Regarding missing middle and how, we're not sure how those will affect the targets that have been adopted by jurisdictions. And we will plan to keep you apprised of that.
That's very interesting.
Thank you. So if we were, we've been talking about leaving it out of the UGA, and we've been talking about keeping it in the UGA, and, and we talked about annexing it, what would be the pluses and minuses? Saying, well, we'd like to annex this property.
Well, in the, in the, in the report, it talks about, I think the difference is. The plus side is, is about eighteen thousand dollars net yearly operating surplus. So it wouldn't yield all that much benefit from a, from a, from a number standpoint.
Give me as far as like property tax income and, and, you know, with that.
Right, and, and annual operating as well.
Okay.
What, what it would take for us to maintain that area, including, you know, police, fire, this is.
We can build on what Carl said. The, this area was not high priority from the consultant in terms of, you know, more of the. Kind of the donut holes areas along Scansy and along Burnham. Those are more high priorities that the council has previously talked about. So if we were gonna go out for targeted annexations, we would recommend pulling after those areas first.
The, the consultant, and to that same point, the consultant actually, if you'll recall, they, they did recommend that this be, and we had another category. We have these strategic areas by priority within the document. There was another category, and that was, uh, remove areas to be removed. And, and we eliminated that category because there wasn't anything left in it after the final discussion with council, and we moved those areas, which was, I think, the Buistich area or McCormick Creek area that you brought up earlier, Councilmember Henderson. Madrona Links was also in that category. We brought those into the long-term management areas. Or as far as strategic areas, right, by priority goes, and when you read what that means within the report, it's essentially just. Backburner, you know, the city's not interested in taking any action. The city's not interested in annexing those areas anytime soon. This is Paige.
So essentially, it would be what we have previously, was that it would be a, a long-term areas, Carl said, along the lines of Canarwood, so. Ten, fifteen plus years out.
Also. We don't lose anything by putting it in that long-term management category.
We don't lose anything, but if we, if we're assuming based on Big Harbor. Real estate market, that's a pretty long time to see if, if the council wants to right now have it be a rural area that would be developed at rural densities. You have the opportunity to do that now. If we put it in long-term annexation, it will stay urban at the five to nine dwelling units per acre for that period of time that we're saying, okay, we're not gonna do that right now. So it really is the opportunity now to affect this, if it's, that's council's choice.
So it's either a very low-density area that we want to keep, or something higher density that might meet some of our higher density needs. I just don't want to lose any options here. The city at some point saying, that's a lot of property, could be developed in the cluster housing with some. Forest around, things like that, a little bit higher density, so it's not downtown in the harbor where people wouldn't want that. I just, I guess I worry about closing doors right now. We're not even sure what our housing stock is right now, because we haven't done our housing needs assessment. I'm not sure what the legislature's gonna start bringing down, as far as, okay, you guys have to do this, you have to do that. I said, I want to make sure that we've got as many options available for us, if we did need to expand, because we don't have a lot of large parcels like this left in the city limits. And even, I think, on the. Our UGA, I don't see any parcels like this, unless you probably know better than I do, but.
Yeah, the, the important thing to remember here is that this would not be analyzed for our housing needs assessment anyway, because it's not within the city limits. And it would not be based on any cottage development or cluster development ordinance that we would develop, because it's under county jurisdiction. So it would be under that residential low that would be five to nine dwelling units per acre that would look something like. Or could look something like the corner of Thirty-Eighth and Hunt, for example, similar something.
Councilmember Lichten, yes, thank you. I'm just kind of tagging on. I, I hear what you, your answer, and this is just a rhetorical question, but I look at that aerial photo. And I see a lot of cleared land. I mean, I don't see, you know, that property as being beautiful, you know, restorative for us, that we would want to protect and have no more than one house for five acres. That. You know, if it's, so if it's out of the book management act, everywhere the density goes to one house for five acres. I mean, I see that as an area that's partially cleared, has all kinds of chemicals and water use. I mean, golf courses aren't necessarily the green, and, and no disrespect to people that use a golf course, but I'm just saying. As far as developable land, I would rather see something like that above than something that is forested and beautiful.
Right, like McCormick Creek, that I would want to see.
So I'm fine either way, whatever council majority decides. I just think that's a rhetorical question to answer.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a really good point to bring up, and sometimes when we think of rural areas, when we live in Washington for so long, we think of. You know, trees and things like that, but it, it really is at some point in terms of GMA, it's about density and the amount of people. And so that really is the thing, the policy question that, that Carl's asking today is. You know, do we want to have this out of the UGA, and then at some point bring it into the city? You know, well, we can add it back into the UGA at a time when we'd be ready to annex that, or are we willing to take the risk that it develops under county standards?
Sure.
Uh, yes, so did I, did I hear you say that, that if we take it back to the county? Then at some point in time, for, and that would be a one, one house per five acres. If sometime we want to re-bring it in, we can re-bring it in?
Yeah, through a comp plan process. Okay. When that would happen.
And until then, then, until then, it would not be developed at five to nine houses per acre.
That's correct. If we remove it from our urban growth area, the most dense zone that county has is one unit per five.
And if we need it later on, we can bring it back in.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Unless the county's developed it.
But they can only develop it. Well, they, they can't develop it if it goes out. They can only develop it at one point, one house per five acres.
But if this was gonna be something like a higher density area, then you've already developed it one, five, but you're not gonna bring it in and say, okay, we're gonna quit.
So not to have a land capacity full lesson here, but if, if. If it were to be developed at one unit for five acres, then that would be classified as underutilized land as far as the buildable lands report.
Okay.
And once those, once that happens going to urban, it's a very dramatic increase to property values, and therefore much more likely to redevelop or add on things to that nature. So there would be a chance for redevelopment or additional development if it were to be one unit for five acres for a period of time.
And, and I'd also add that if it were to be developed, if it was left in the county and it were to be developed, they would, they would have to go through. A, a comp plan process at the county to change the land use designation, and also a rezone. So at that point, we, the city would be involved in, you know, maybe comment on that process, so we would have an opportunity to get our voice heard, stable. When that happens, even if it were outside of our UGA, we could still get involved in the process, because with, while it's in the UGA. You know, we have maybe a little more foothold on that, but even if it's out of the UGA, we still, we still get involved. We can still be involved in that process at that point. As far as land use goes.
Just to put the density in perspective, uh we had five homes per acre. That's five hundred and ninety five homes. At one home acreage, only hundred nineteen. So it's substantially more. I mean, it'll take over. That many homes.
And that would that would be a gross acreage. Uh, and also, so sorry, you can ask me the. The actual acreage there, part of that. For one nineteen is already developed though with simple family homes. So twenty seven acres is already developed. So you're really looking at more like seventy seven.
So proportionally.
Yeah.
So it to me, it's easier to look at six hundred homes versus a hundred.
If I may, they, you know, we've heard from council, especially when certain developments on the fringe of the city have been developed that don't look like what the city looks like. And so as staff on this. We felt the need to bring this forward to you because we talked about, you know, well, at periods of time, something could have been done. So before we adopt this document, this is a discussion that we felt was appropriate to have here so that that a decision was being made that was. With council and not necessarily on a staff level.
That's very interesting.
So looking at you guys who know this a lot better than all of us together. And kind of understanding where. Some of the council wants to go and we have to meet higher density uh requirements by the state. What would you? Which one of these options would allow you to sleep best at night? From your point of view as experts. Given the fact that we we don't want to, okay, I'll speak for myself. I wouldn't want to see it developed in a lot of McMansions that does help anyhow. And for the culture rich. So my question is, leaving it in or leaving it out? Which one?
Are you trying to answer the question?
Well, I I.
You go first and she'll disagree with you.
Katrina has a lot of experience, so yes, I would defer to Katrina and. Answering that, but I would I would also defer to the consultant. The consultant, when they studied this, they looked at all of the numbers. They looked at our entire UGA, they looked at the city, they recommended that this should be looked at for removal or at least designated as an area. That could be removed from our UGA should the this the city decide. So that's not the. We should reframe it just a little bit. We're not asking you to make a decision to remove it from the UGA today. We're saying we're going to designate this area as an area to be removed in the future. So in other words, when the county, when when the county comes to us and says, hey, we want to reduce. Your what they call potential annexation area. Want to reduce your potential annexation area. Do you have any areas that you? Would would uh like to tell us could be removed? And we would say, yes, we do. We have these couple of areas. It's in our report. Here's why all the numbers are there. Um, so for me, I would defer to the consultant that put this together and made that original recommendation that we ultimately didn't take. He decided to go a different direction, which is fine. Uh, we bring it into the long term. Uh, management area, which is essentially not removing it, not not designated, designated for removal. But saying we're not going to do anything about it for now, which is back where.
I guess hearing that and also kind of trying to process all of the discussions. I guess I'm moving into the, let's put it in the removal category. Because I was also looking at when you showed the map with the golf course on it. And there was a property to this south of it that they were kind of saying, hey, we we might want that. We designated that as our second highest priority. We designated it as local led potential annexation area. So I guess if I'm thinking about Pierce County coming to us and saying, do you have anything you want to give us? I'd rather give them something we already had designated as long term. We may want it rather than something. That we designated as, yeah, I think we want this. If that makes sense. That's where I'm I'm leaning to move it to removal or possible removal. And I think that goes along with what the county is looking at as well. They're looking at the, I know you can't see the map I'm going to look. But essentially those those areas that you're pointing out on health, Marv or Marv are areas that the county has now approached the city about removing. Because they need to reduce their overall urban growth area countywide because of predevelopment agreements that they have for. I always want to call it to the law. All day. The place all starts with T. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I think our recommendation. Which is why we wanted to bring it back. I don't necessarily think the consultants advice to council at the time saying that it was not impactful. I don't necessarily feel that that was. Accurate. Um, I do think leaving it in would have a an additional impact to our infrastructure, transportation, et cetera, when we are really trying to. Jeff's team is really trying to construct roads and sidewalks, build up what we have. And so from a planning perspective, we would recommend removal. Can you put the map that's on page forty eight up on the screen? That's the one that I'm looking at.
Yeah.
And why are you doing that, Councilor Stroose?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, um. Do we have to change anything now? And if down the road and the county comes back to us, they, you know, ask for a particular area. I mean, it might be easier to decide then and kind of knowing what their intent or plan is with it rather than just saying one section now. Does that make sense? But like, why are we deciding now when we don't know what their intent is? We can decide later.
The reason that we're deciding now is because this is going to be coming forward for council adoption. And so we haven't had the opportunity to come and talk about this issue prior to it being adopted. And then once we receive that policy direction in form of adopting this, we can go work with the county without having to guess what council wants us to do.
It makes that discussion much easier, which is.
That's my worry. Uh, just to clarify, there's some. Trying to trap all this good stuff is that you're recommending that we um take. This parcel out and say that could be one that we would be willing to give up in the UGA. It's not saying we are.
That's great.
But then it's allowing you as staff members, when you're engaging in conversations with Pierce County. To know the leeway that you have as you're having conversations with them so that you can then appropriately bring that forward to us, council members and saying. Hey, you've given me the approval at least to have this. I'm not surprising any of you when here's kind of conversations have been handled.
That's correct.
And for transparency with the property owners, that this is what the city is looking at, and we have other priorities in terms of annexation. At least what the report says.
Thank you.
So I saw some head head nods. Anyone want to throw out there?
I was just going to say that's an excellent summary, and it sounds like staff's recommendation is to remove it for you and have that. When you sit down with the county and. Seeing majority head nods, so I think you're in your direction to designate it to possibly be removed.
Roger. Thank you.
Councilor Henderson, did you have an additional?
No, no, I always have one question, but I think. Flow on this one.
Okay.
I I think as long as we have options, as long as we're not excluding anything or excluding stuff. Because I, again, like a council member or like Brenda said, this is an area that might in the future be well developed for like cluster housing. That's right. Meets our future more affordable housing needs or requirements. And I just don't want to do anything that would like take it out and we never get it back. I just don't want to see another low density and expensive house, because that's not going to help us a bit. So if you guys are happy with it, then I'm all right as well.
Thank you for reading my face.
We need hands.
Yeah. I have to learn that. No, that was my poker face today. Uh, so if I'm understanding correctly, we would be able to use that property for our goals management act members, et cetera, only if we were able to annex it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And as Carl can attest to, you all will have so many growth discussions over the next two years. You have a comp plan kicking off. That this this whole citywide on these these terms will have so a lot more conversations about. Um, growth and zoning and development regulations.
This decision today does not commit us to anything other than just some direction, so some some direction forward.
It sounds like it gives us a lot of flexibility.
Absolutely. Like, yeah. We just seem a lot of stuff in anything. This is taken by my long interview. Oh, it's okay. I'm sorry. I I don't think I raised the question well at the beginning, so I appreciate your patience.
No, good discussion, though. It's a good, good discussion. And it's very valuable. We want to make sure that we bring these policy discussions to policymakers and that they're not being made. Um, you know, at administrative or staff level. We want to make sure that we have direction and we can move forward with that direction.
I haven't heard from our city in.
From the works director. I don't know.
All right. Well, thank you, council, and thank you, Carl, very much for for putting this together and to your team who helped with this as well. Really appreciate that. And thank you to Katrina also for providing some additional.
Yeah.
You know, comments and clarity and appreciate that. So we'll move on to discussion item number two, which is our proposed COVID nineteen utility repayment program. And this report comes to us from Public Works Director Jeff Lee Nellin. And if you'd like to introduce anyone with you then to. Present this or answer questions.
Can I just say something before we get it? I really liked the way that that private conversation went. Because because uh staff kind of knew what they wanted, but they let us dance around. Well, become more familiar with it, ask our questions and things like that.
Yeah.
And to me, that's the way it should operate. Always want to hear what the others say, but it wasn't them telling us. What we should be doing. So thanks for that.
Is it okay if we kind of go to the restroom?
Oh, of course. Yes. So we we might take a formal break after discussion item two, but if you do need to get up and come back, that's fine. Study sessions are are good for that. So, yeah. No worries. Uh, okay, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so yes, I do. Here with me today is uh Eli King, one of our utility building technicians and Jeff Olson. Um, been working with these two folks along with uh Jerika Ardeen. And uh Daniel Kenny, City Attorney, uh to put together what we've proposed to you today, which is in the memo. Not including my scratchings, but um that memo that was provided for you today. Essentially, we've got a, well, I'm going to open up, share my screen here and walk down the timeline. It kind of goes through what was outlined in the memo here. Share. So um. Just wanted to walk down how we got to where we are real quick and uh talk about what we have both. What where we are currently and then where we're going to be proceeding to. Of course, March of twenty twenty, the emergency proclamation was put in place at that same council meeting, or that's fourteen thirty nine was put into place. Uh, or that's fourteen thirty nine uh halted us imposing interest charges. And uh basically shutting off people grabbing the local accounts. So we stopped that on that date. Uh, we proceeded through COVID pandemic. Uh, the state had a similar proclamation right at the beginning in March, but then in September twenty twenty one. Their uh proclamation expired and we left ours in place. No issues there. However, and then we come along the next year, October, November of twenty twenty two. The city notified a specific group of our customers, tenants and landlords of past due accounts. Because maybe you're familiar, maybe you're not, but if you are a renter or a tenant here in the state of Gig Harbor. Uh, in other words, you're renting a place that you don't own, uh and you need to open up an utility account, you as a tenant are allowed to do that. We um. But the property owner per state law, the property owner is still uh responsible for paying utility bill in the end. Um, so we did notify both tenants and landlords that uh you're. Pat, you have an account that's past due. We will be uh because of the first proclamation, you know, we're not we're not shutting you off. But uh there's going to come a time where we're going to implement what we're doing now, which is a repayment program, the code we're to seal in. So they were put on notice. Uh, and then December of twenty twenty two, uh well, if you remember, we adopted resolution twelve sixty seven that ended the emergency proclamation from March of twenty twenty. Uh, and then we are here now talking about what was, that emergency proclamation did many things, but one of the jet is a case six months. For our utility customers to uh become current on their utility bills. Um, if not, then we'll start to impose interest charges and there will be delinquency. People will start to come back in play. And we could start shutting people off from water. Um, and so we we had that approved for resolution twelve sixty seven in December. Uh, if you follow the right couple of bubbles, uh you'll see June twelfth suspension of delinquency ends and interest begins. So that's that six month timeframe, but bouncing back to January twenty third of twenty twenty three. Based on input we hear today, we want to come to council with a request to adopt a repayment program. And that's what was outlined in draft format in your uh memo. A couple of things uh we have, and I can bring it up if you'd like, but we we have the uh. Oh, share, stop sharing real quick just to make sure we're on the same page. I don't know if anybody's watching. Oh, beyond us, but um. Okay, so this is what we're talking about. This is the draft COVID nineteen payment program agreement. We've been working. This is based off of other jurisdictions who have already moved forward through this. So we're not reinventing the wheel here. We've received input on this with city attorney. This isn't the latest version, but the version that you saw. So don't confuse anybody. You will see a different version slightly updated when you bring it back to council uh based on input from the group. And so, but essentially it's giving the uh customer options, depending on the past due amount, you can check if you want to. Uh, have a term of your repayment at four months, which is two million periods or whatever. You just go on the list and you write that and then. Write that back to us as long as you accept that you're going to meet all these criteria, which are listed here. I'm not going to go through them, but you have them. Uh, you sign in and submit it to us. And then that brings us back to this timeline. So we're going to have the program is implemented. We're going to send out the notices to the customers. That could be tenants and residents or owners, tenants, whomever. Uh, notices will be sent out to them. That will include the final version of the form that we just looked at. And then we're going to uh start going through in June and. Receiving those, the active here DC PPAs for COVID. Payment program agreements uh will be submitted back to the city. That'll give us a very brief amount of time to turn it back around and start. Know finding out who is delinquent and uh if we need to start shutting people off, we can put that in progress as a whole progress procedure about that. And then interest would begin.
It's only two days.
Two days, yeah.
Right. Well, we were going to shut off. We're not going to shut off right now.
No, we're still got two days to figure it out. Is that enough time?
He said it was.
Do you want to take questions now or at the end or?
I'll pause here. Yes. So I see the number, you know, how many utility accounts we have, and there's two hundred and seventy four that are considered delinquent at this time, correct?
Yes.
Um, now we see the average amount. What was it? What was our number prior to COVID? You know, what kind of number were the notices? This is a much greater impact because the last couple of years, financial impacts, economy. Where do we, where were we? And then what do we expect to be given the notices in the timeline? Do you want to take that one?
Oh, yeah. Um, so before COVID, which finds you, I was not here, but I looked at some reports. It was between maybe ten to fifteen accounts. Um, and that's only because like by a certain point, your water would get shut off. And so it didn't really move that much further because you weren't receiving some services. So the timeframe of it like. You're getting your past due to when you're cut off is like seventy two days. So there wasn't really that much room for. So many accounts to become past due without receiving services from us. So so the amount from then to now is. Nineteen day, right?
And.
I'm sorry. You had another question, though. It was where we were to be. Yeah, because two seventy four. We had that discussion yesterday.
Yeah, so when we started um notifying customers of their. notifying customers of their past due amounts, because after two to three months of COVID, there was only one utility billing technician and going through like 3,000 accounts to try and notify all these people just wasn't physically possible. So we started notifying people and back. And that was, we started in November. And we're around 500 accounts at that point in time. So then landlords also started receiving notices that their tenants had past due accounts. That really helped bring down the number. And then 274 was on Friday of last week. So I'm, I'm kind of estimating just based off of those numbers, probably by the time that like all of the people that actually need a payment plan. I'm thinking maybe 100 to 125 customers.
That will shut off.
No, that will need a payment plan and shut offs.
How often were we shutting off before? Like, did it actually get to a church at all?
We were going.
Eight to 10 customers.
A month.
Every couple of months.
Yeah. So just as a framework, since I didn't give it another more question. Eli started with this in September 2021.
Sorry, because of the city?
City, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, September 2021. So we're halfway through or more COVID. And then Jerika just started this. So, yeah, so it's been a learning curve for a long.
So it sounds like of these 274 people that are already down to 100.
No, no, we were.
Five. Now we're down at 274. So you've been in contact with most of these people. Do you feel like this payment plan is going to be achievable for many of them? Are the ones that you've already notified, are they, some of them already starting to pay even though they don't have to yet, you know, technically yet? That kind of thing. I guess I'm trying to figure out the, the impact on some of these most vulnerable people in our community.
From my conversations with some of our customers, I mean, it goes from, you know, I'm not paying because there's no interest and I'll pay it once we start getting interest on our late charges to some people that are like, I can only pay $20 a month extra amounts. It's like going to break me and I don't know if I can stay current. So, I mean, it, it kind of goes from here to there. So I think that I I had came up with this one just to try and kind of like meet in the middle there like that. Yes, I understand that sometimes $20 is more to, you know, every single person in this room. It feels a little bit different. But at the same time, services are provided and we can't extend so far out that 10 years down the road, we're still paying for stuff that happened last year. So kind of trying to give them a tiered system of like this is how much you owe. Mind you, our our highest past due account is over $9,000. So just for like context, so like the average is about $526. But some of these customers have not paid the whole entire time during COVID. So the two years of utility bills is significant. So breaking that into the most that we have of a 2020 extra payments is going to be a steep plus staying current with what you get every two months. So trying to find that balance between it's impossible, but it has to get done type of thing. I think it's where kind of we landed with it for the tiered system. Was that it was going to be beneficial for everybody at the city and the citizens both.
Thank you.
Yes. So with regards to the hardship cases. We got some money from CARES from the federal government, I believe. We gave child lump sum 500,000, I think, to Fish, which was a wonderful thing to be able to help them. And to our citizens, is there a way to figure out if somebody is really having a hardship case that we can in some manner either delay or help them with some of this CARES money is.
What we can't do is we can't lend them credit. We have to charge them interest on anything that's late. We can't carry a balance at zero interest. But one thing, and it's in this draft document, it's just customer support procedures that Eli and Jerika put together. It's a great document. It's a, it's a something for them to follow, but it's also something that's very transparent that we can say, here's what our, what we're proposing. Just flashed over. Here's other resources. So here are some resources that we have identified. And to your question specifically in this fish food bank right here. One to, to the money that came through the CARES, the ARPA funds. That is a possibility. We would have to establish the criteria of what that would look like. We have time to do that. It's a good thing about having these discussions now, putting this into place. We can talk about what that could look like. But I, we would want to be able to do some research. I would have to talk to the finance director to make sure that it's either not already spoken for. Or, and it's not spoken before, then probably going to follow up and what that criteria will look like. I mean, we're not going to give it to anybody who comes in and says, here, I have a $9,000 outstanding bill. Can you pay it for me? Well, we need to show hardship. We need to show a few of it. So we have to establish that criteria. Not necessarily easy to do. We have to be fair to everything else. So it is possible and we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I'm sort of interested in, in having that. And having that go for her. Thank you.
I've been trying to keep track of hand order. Like, I think yours was up at number four. So, oh, my number. Okay. It was earlier before I wrote other people's.
It felt good. I'm okay. Thank you. Um, so Jeff, first of all, I want to thank everybody for this. I don't know if you all got your water bill. And thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I took a picture and sent it to Katrina. And so my heart is happy. Seeing that people know about this low income senior thing, simple thing. We are already mailing. Yeah, I was just very excited about that. I, I know you probably need to finish your presentation and we kind of interrupted you with questions. But I just want to say as a healthcare provider, turning up water for sanitation, that is a massive concern. I, I mean, it's like, if we're going to do that, are we going to provide welfare checks? So the police is going to go out. I mean, it's a, it's a massive concern for sanitation reasons, culture, communicable diseases. And it's easier to keep someone in a home for, you know, that's experiencing financial hardship than to try to rehome. Have them be addicted, have their water shut off. It's always easier to get support for this kind of. I know you did a nice job in this document of listing out the reasons. I would love to see, just to tag on to what you talked about. That if there is a defined need, can we actually connect them with these resources instead of just standing on the list? Because they might not be in a place to, you know, watch for the charge. So can we partner with some other charitable organizations to make sure that we don't just turn them off? Yeah, that's just it. Thank you.
Congressman.
How fast?
Yeah, I hate to always be the grouchy guy. You called it. You said services were given and they owe the money. You've done a really good job of showing four resources here where they can go to get help. I don't believe the city is in the position, we're not a charitable organization, however, the four sources you call here are. And they do a good job. I, you may know, I know quite a bit about the financial aid at Fish Food Bank. I think they might be able to do more work with them. Because they are, the money they have for financial aid, they have different buckets, just like we do. Is, is good. They've got a lot of money in that bucket. So maybe if we do a little bit more work with them, and I can certainly tell you who to talk to to identify the people that truly have hardships. Instead of people that just want to get out of paying their bill. That might be a way to tell people that hardships. But they got the service they need to pay. You've done a good job giving them. So, and it's, I don't know, the $500,000 that we did give Fish. You may recall that wasn't for operating expenses. That was to put in the ridiculously required retention bond for their waste.
Just so you know, I mean, I've been talking, learning a lot from Eli and Jerika about this. And Eli has examples where he has worked with customers to connect them with Fish Food Bank. So. I mean, he understands that already.
Right now, very much. Right now, first of all, the Fish Food Bank is saying I need to pay my water bill. But I think we can go a step further. If Fish financially truly understand the payment plan, maybe they can help put people on a payment plan and, and commit because it's going to be paying up to twenty months. But certainly a couple of months, they can help put that person on a payment plan and help them make those payments. Month after month, because right now, if, if your next bill is due, they will pay and might be your electric bill. But you're not going to do it next month. Unless you're a senior or help otherwise disabled.
I, I do think that probably towards the end of May, beginning of June is really going to weed out a lot of the people that are trying to take advantage of the system. I think that there's, there's a new, an extended program through Pierce County Health and Human Services that we do now have a contract with. So if they are eligible, they'll pay up to $2,500 of past due utilities. And that, and the documents and the information that you have to provide to them is definitely something that we could look at to more define who is really in the hardship situation. Once we get to, you know, and if we wanted to extend it more than 20 months or doing something like that, but having to provide more proof of the hardship. Yeah, like, but, but that's also something that at some point when we were talking with the city attorney about it is that at some point, there has to be like an end date for all of this COVID frequent and 15 years down the road is probably not financially responsible for the city side of it. So trying to figure out.
If you don't mind me getting involved, I will talk to Fish. I know people work in financial aid pretty well. And ask them if they might participate in organizing the payment plan instead of just writing the city a check. And it also helps people that need the money. It helps them to be a little bit more self-sufficient. And it gives them a sense of pride and they feel they can be part of it. So.
Well, that'd be great. And just as a reminder, the Pierce County program is something that was adopted by council, accepted last year and Pierce County extended it one more year. So we've got until September of 2023, right? End of September.
You'd mentioned you developed this based on others that have done it. Have you like touched bases with them and said, hey, how does it work? Do you have people that can't? They can't do it or, you know, getting all these people in the $500 over the two billion periods, they just can't do it. Or those people coming around?
It's more successful than not is what I have heard. I, I contacted two different cities that run the same type of utilities that we do. And they're they also had, you know, just a few different resources, but just really encouraging the people that are struggling to keep up with those payment plans, trying to reach out to different community and organizations that are helping with financial hardship. Because that there are a few that just aren't able to do it.
Yeah.
And yeah, the, I mean, the last thing that I think any of us that have to do it, me giving the list, making less of the shut off lists, and then the people that are actually going out to the people and turning off their water. I don't think that that's something that we want to do. But, you know, it's just, it, it has to get done. You know, and so, I mean, really trying to figure out what the best course of action and giving them as much opportunity, which all of these people have had at least since February of 2022, that they're getting reminder notices that they're past due. And, you know, they call, well, what's going on? We're not shutting off. We're not doing anything right at this moment in time, but it is going to happen. So if you could pay an extra $50 every two weeks, I highly suggest it, but that doesn't mean that when all of this ends, that we can take that, you know, what you were doing and keep continuing to extend it. So I, I tried to let them know, like, anything is better than nothing. Five dollars every couple of days, if you can, like you end up with, you know, five dollars on the bottom of your shoe, whatever, call us. So, you know, just to like, start picking away at that a little bit is just some of the things that we've been trying to do at the utility department without any structure of a payment plan on the horizon.
So my, my only comment would be on the payment option, the $500, you only got a couple of billing periods. That might be a lot. I mean, one option would be to zero to 1,000 years for billing periods. When you keep everything. I don't know. And again, you have to deal with people that are misusing the system to people that are like struggling like heck. And even five bucks a pay period is going to be tough. I don't know. It's just the, the two billing periods at a $500 bill. That's, it might be kind of steep. That's just a thought.
Congressman. Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with, you know, all the points and I appreciate the work you do. I'm sure those are hard calls and hard work. Appreciate it. I wonder, you know, a lot of the utilities have these one family funds or different things where when you pay your bill, you can, customers can add an additional five hundred dollars or round up or whatever you do to help cover people whose bills. And I agree with Lee, you know, it has to be based on financial, showing financial need, kind of like with this over 55 low income people. You know, if they can show designated need, can we as a municipality collect extra money to pay on your bills? Is that something that we can do with them to cover? As an option.
It's motivating. We can. We just haven't had the staff to manage. I mean, up and like I said, up until last October, we only had one utility going and peeling off their duties to other people just so they can get a bill out. But yes, I think that something we can look at in the future and talk about and see, talk to the attorney, make sure that he's on board with that.
I also need to bring in the finance director because we have, we have some pretty strict limitations for overcharging money and when in certain instances that we can do that, but it's something that we can do in here.
If you can look into it, because there are a lot of generous hearts, I think, in this community. And if people can show, not just people who are working in the system that you're talking about, but people who actually have financial need. If we could create some type of fund with all of the coordinated people, and if you have the staff, of course. I, I think people would show up to do that.
First of all, thank you. As we were just speaking about, these are hard things, hard conversations to have and to try to filter out. Is it a person who's just saying, hey, I've got a few extra dollars in my pocket or truly is having hardship to be able to make ends meet is difficult and that's a third known use. Thank you for that. But curious of how many of that 274 are commercial entities versus individual.
Only a few. There's not very many commercial accounts that are past due. I would say probably less than 50, just off the top of my head. And that's just because I've gone through them so many, so many times. Keep a tally of that, but just the ones that I know that have been showing up on my list every month. There's got to be less than 50, maybe more around like 20.
I was just going to add on to what Councilmember Lekins was saying, and it might be, once you start looking at this fund, it might be that it would be easier for the city to implement a group of fish so that I could pay extra on my bill, but it actually goes to fish for them to disperse. So that it, it's not the city elect, I mean, the city collects it but passes it through. That might Dave might think that is better.
Or the public funds or something.
Or we all have that. Yeah.
I just, another option might be to partner with Fish and publicize to have people
And that was what I was just.
And then further publicize that as an option versus having the city being the, that would add some administrative burden that I don't, I think is unanticipated. But I think the idea is really great to be able to publicize what Fish has and give that option to donate extra money.
And and honestly, if if and when this Health and Human Services, you know, coordinator would come on, this is like.
It's perfect.
Within that, for helping to get these relationships going, helping the utility billing department. I mean, they're going to be helping literally everywhere, um but this is a perfect example of what that position would be. It's helping to assist with and then getting that message out to the community and facilitating those partnerships and. All of that. I completely agree with.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh no, sorry, it's the second time I've raised. You know, it's funny, we have sometimes sometimes think about your question.
Um any other questions from council for for now, or should we let Jeff continue on?
So, um, okay, so again, we're looking back up at this timeline. I think we got to June timeframe, the agreements are due June ten. Suspension, uh delinquencies ends and interest begins on June twelfth. And that gives us time to create that shut off list and a few other things that will, uh, that the utility billing will be. Moving forward with in preparation for that July first day. Right now, we are getting ready, if approved on January twenty third, we're getting ready, we're gonna have a meeting set up. To update our website and start to get the word out, uh and then we can. Um start take quite answers there, questions, answers there, and then I'm sure that as you and I were saying, there will probably be, once we start noticing people. We'll start to get some full payments in full on a lot of those accounts, and we'll get down to people who really need this planning program in place. So, um if again, I'll just end my spiel. Uh we are planning on bringing this back with a few modifications that we've made. Um a lot of great ideas here, but we won't be presenting these as part of the program, but just as we proceed forward on other ways to support. Uh low payments and support for low income people.
Well, okay, oh, oh, so Councilmember. Okay, I'm going back to January tenth to twelve. I just looked at the calendar, the tenth is a Saturday and the twelfth is a Monday. So that's not even a business day. I'm really concerned about that timeframe. It's your timeframe, but.
So the intent for June twelfth would be. You only for the people that have a past due account that had not made contact with the city in some way, shape or form. To start a payment plan and board pay off their.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that that's.
You hopefully.
Yeah, I the application that we would like to send, we would like to send by certified mail so that we get the little signature cards back. Just to see, so I do this also for backflow. Um so I have gotten, I think I've sent out over three hundred certifies and I get maybe. Three back, so then I know I really need to figure out something's going on with like the, you know, the post office couldn't get somebody to sign this card. There's something going on, you know, so so I don't think that the, I mean, now that you say tenth is a Saturday. And we're not planning on being in the office on that day. But the couple of days is just that really short, hopefully, it's gonna be like a really, really short list of just. People that haven't made contact and got non-payment plan or pay their past due balance off. So that's why it's only a couple of days, it really helps me, that's only gonna be a few people.
If we, if we don't adopt this on January the twenty third and you bring it back to us the first meeting of February. Well, that gives you a little bit more time to answer some of our questions and to work on, like a repayment plan through Fish or. A partnership with them, does that need to be in any repayment program? Uh should that be part of the repayment program or is that?
I would like to keep the repayment program separate from any other methods where somebody else will receive support from outside. Uh I think that would, we could have that discussion with the attorney though, I mean, if if there is. Yeah, I'll turn back to Eli and see if that timeframe pushing up every three, three, four things, that's definitely.
So so if we go ahead and and adopt a repayment program. And then notices are sent out in in April. Is there enough time to to discuss and get out to the public everything that we've talked about today as far as repayment and partnerships? I mean, I'm hoping that answers, yes.
Yes, I think there would be.
Okay.
We work on it concurrently. I think you can't change the payment plan, I mean, that's, it's a good one. But it's how to facilitate that is a different question altogether for each individual customer.
I agree.
What we'll do is um. Prime schedule at a upcoming study session soon in February or March. Some responses, I will reach out to folks, including the city attorney, finance director, Fish, and see what. Other options might be out there and we can report back.
Okay.
Um thanks. So on the July first shut off list, how much time after that would you start going out with your? Shut offs, actually making.
Um so. Our municipal code gives us ten days, so we sent out a certified letter by mail. And with a ten day notice, in ten days your water is gonna be shut up, unless you pay whatever it is. So then. Ten days after that, so then it actually comes out to be like twelve days. Then on the tenth day, we put a twenty four hour hanger on your door. So somebody from our Public Works Department goes out with a notice and it's in an envelope, just a city of state card where. One, I think it actually used to just be a red door hanger that would go on to said property. And then, and that gave them until one o'clock the following day, and if it wasn't. Settled by one o'clock the next day, then that's when their water gets shut off.
So given that um. When that list gets created, maybe you can get back to Jeff that you can ping us that we've got three people, we're gonna get four, three hundred and fifty people. We might need to get something out from the city that kind of getting ahead of any negative. Everybody's gonna say, well, my water got shut off, I didn't know how this was gonna happen. Just to be prepared, I mean, if there's only two or three people, okay, that's all right, but if it's a large number. Yeah, I think we may be. In with a bit of proactive messaging, maybe by then we'll have a communication.
Sounds very welcome. Thank you. Um I know that some cities and states have passed legislation during heat waves. For weather events that you learn not to shut off utilities. Um and that also, I've written several letters for patients who are medically fragile. That their water central tower can't be turned off for reasons. Is that something that we need to, if it's something we want to do, or just, I was just, you know, we should be aware of that? Is that something we need to put into an ordinance?
Yes, um it's glad that you, I'm glad you bring this up, so we're in the midst of our utility rate study. We're kicking that off again here this month.
Yeah.
Um we're going to be having two study sessions in council between now and hopefully the June. One study session strictly about the utility rates for the next six years. Next study session will be uh discussion about other items that will be in this coaching through ordinance. About how we need to improve and streamline our utility bill process. We've met already to talk about that. We have a list of things from the staff's perspective we want changed. So I think that would be something good to add into that future ordinance when we come to study session. I hope it's gonna be in like the April timeframe.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Um so are we thinking we will move this then bump it from January twenty third to the first one in February?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you for all you're doing.
The flyers, so there's a ton extra, so our printing company can only print twenty five hundred or five thousand, right? They send us all of the rest of them, so I gave them to definitely help to give to you as, so if you're a community and wanna hand them out to. People that you think might benefit.
Yeah, you're like, I used to Scott's front counter, I've got some sitting on my table in my office. Um I will try to go grab this real quick.
Thank you. The ghost of Josh is still with us, so I can't see you, but I know you're there. Um okay, welcome back to the Kinnarver City Council Study Session on Thursday, January twelfth. Twenty twenty uh three, the time is four thirty four P M. And we are on our third inspection item, which is Murphy's Landing Marina dredging. And our this report comes to us from Republic Works Director Jeff Blenheim, and I'll let you introduce.
Thank you very. So yes, now for this item I have with Marcus Pogra, he is the project engineer involved in the. Murphy's Landing Marina dredging project. Marcus. My wow. Um so hopefully you've seen the memo, it came for the session today. Um Marcos did a great job of summarizing the history. I'm gonna share on my screen just a map of the area we're talking about. So, some of you may were, may have been on council when we literally entered into this dredging agreement. With Murphy's Landing in twenty twenty one. Uh in short, this authorized, this agreement authorized the city to um. With the design permitting, and then once the grant is complete, hand it over to Murphy's Landing so they can hire contractors. Do the dredging itself, make the payments, something else, so. Can kind of see where that dredging um location is identified, of course, is at the end of their barrier. Where it also connects, we're almost very close to a D F blowpipe from the city. Um there's essentially amount of sediment there, at least be dredged out. Let me leave the map up on just so you can, so we'll look at. But uh so Marcos has been representing in this project since it first started with consultant in twenty twenty one. We submitted at various times in twenty twenty two, the necessary permits. Um the the consultant back in twenty twenty one started initiated, uh so we've got local permits that are necessary, state permits. And federal permits. It's pretty similar for all the permitting agencies that we work with when they're doing anything on the water. Um and so we have now received the, we've gone through CPO, which is the local. A portion of the local fund permits, we've gone through shoreline, and we've uh received the hearings and our decisions. Uh that was just received the last week, this means this week, yeah. So we've just received the hearings and our decision with us. Uh what's outstanding are the state and the federal permits, but those are moving along. We're getting ready to receive those hopefully soon. Um throughout the permitting process, the cities in the consulting left open the opportunity to either dispose of dredging. The the dredging uh in water, which if you look at any NOAA chart, we're gonna be. There's a spot in commensurate base, there's disposal. That's where D N R has designated, this is where if you're dredging, you can dispose of materials. And so that was uh an option that was identified, and then it says alternatively, you can go upward also. So both options have been in all of our permitting documents to dispose of the spoils either in water or upward. Murphy's Landing has requested that we proceed with disposal in water due to reduced costs. We've received some quotes, Marcos has a quick comparison here, I, but in short, about three contractors. Yes, in water disposal is less expensive. Um if there's any contamination in it though, you can't do water disposal, you have to take it upward. Um the lowest estimate we received was about twice for upwind disposal than what it was for in water disposal. Uh fifty four thousand versus a hundred and five hundred and two thousand. Um and so we recognize that uh what we have done through our permitting is. To leave the door open to disposal methods either way. But with the Army Corps, we have gone through what they call a nationwide permit, that nationwide permit would have it be upwind disposal. If at the time of dredging soils are sampled. Um you find out contamination or representing decides that they want to go the less expensive route. Their contractor or representing could apply for uh an individual permit. The individual permit would allow them to dispose of the sediment and spoils in water. It doesn't require, my understanding, additional local permits, additional state permits, it just requires that one additional federal permit. So where we are today, and what we noted in the staff memo is that there's a few options we're looking at. Uh option two is the one that staff would recommend. Uh whereby we would just continue along this process, we would receive all of the permits we've already applied for. We would then hand those permits off to and reassign them to Murphy's Landing. And at Murphy's Landing's timeframe, they would get the contractor out there to do the work. If Murphy's Landing elects to go ahead and dispose of the spoils in water. They or their contractor can take that individual permit, but that's not something for us to decide, that's something that they want to. So that's the, um that's summary of what we're, how we're proceeding. We're not looking for a decision to be made by council here, we're just looking for if there's any questions input or. Comments on this before the, we staff proceeds down the path of option two.
Thank you. So um no matter what disposal method, upend or in water sampling analysis, whatever we did in the settings.
That's why I was.
Yeah, except for tests. So who set that analyte list, was that Department of Ecology or D N R?
Uh one of those permit agencies.
Okay, have we seen that list? I mean, would we specifically know it?
No, I have not.
When we get our permit back?
Yes, that's when they would.
Oh.
Issue what elements that we'd have to search for.
Right.
I say we, but it would be like Jeff explained. I forgot to mention um Parametrics, who's a consultant working with us on this project, has provided us. Uh estimate of how much it would cost to go through individual permit, and that's uh beyond what we've already paid them, an additional just under seventy thousand. So there's more environmental work and there's more permitting support, you know, so. That's out there, if 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 there's not an interest for the staff to get you down with option two, but rather to do, go through and apply for the individual permit. On behalf of Murphy's Landing, then we would be coming back to council with a dissolved services contract amendment. To have Parametrics do that additional work that's in that second. They dredged here before, right? They dredged here in order to create the outbase, and if you can kind of see it by cursing a lot. This is a great picture.
Yeah.
You can see the ban of what the delta used to look like. In order to put this yacht basin in, they had to dredge the naturally occurring sediments from Earth Creek out of this area. They dredged it most recently, I think it was in two thousand twelve, which is at the same time they built this deflection barrier. The deflection barrier was, uh if first by Murphy's Landing, uh they asked the city to install this deflection barrier because they said, your creek is. Building in our yacht basin. And we said, not the case, we had some more discussion with them. They accepted our response and they built this deflection barrier themselves, so essentially it deflected the sediment down to the end of the.
And everybody knows where the effluent pipe is.
Everybody knows where the effluent pipe is.
Because it's relatively shallow, it was laid on, laid on the surface with thirty six inches of.
Yes, yes, it comes above this, it's just off the map, but just right about here where cursors, that's where it comes. Out and it's no longer under the seabed and it's on top of the surface.
I guess, I'd like to thank you for your work. And won't it be nice to have this maybe been. This has been going on for many years, so I I'm I myself am interested in option two. Thank you. This has been going on for many years, so I I'm I myself am interested in option two, thank you.
I'm seeing nodding heads for option two, Councilmember Barber, she has something.
No, I think I I'm for option two as well, it seems, and I, this may not be correct, but it seems to have less or put more responsibility and potentially liability with the marina rather than with the city. Is that a correct interpretation?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
And this would be the last time that we're doing this for that. It is. Any future, right, any future dredging, they're, I mean, they've got to do the whole permitting process on the ticket. And construction.
Yeah, that's how it's specifically stated in the agreement.
Yeah. Good, all right, yeah.
Okay, well, then that's our presentation for this item, um, we will proceed with option two and have that conversation with Murphy's Landing, and then finalize the permitting process with our report, and hopefully write a letter handing it all on to Murphy's Landing's student. And.
I have a question, just in general, dredging, when you, if and when we day in my Crescent Creek on Burner Harson, will there be any dredging done there?
No, not likely. Um, the idea there would be, we would be, work with our consultant to predict where the new estuary level would be and design our new facility, Fox Culver Bridge, whatever we build there to accommodate that new elevation, and then let nature, we essentially move the sediment around as nature sees that.
But we'll be building that up in front of your house.
I'm off. Keep water. We bought. Sixty foot yard.
All right, well, thank you so much, Jeff, and you know, those for your work on this, and, um, if there's anything else from council, I'd sooner to get him to move on to the journey.
Move to the journey.
That's good news.
Sure. I love good.
Talking about Donkey Creek, uh, the G Harbor Commercial Fisherman's Civic, it's gonna be planning, uh, half million to a million eggs in their hatchery within the next couple of weeks. They've been down there for the last three weeks, cleaning out the incubators, that kind of thing, so.
Nice.
Good deal.
It'll be, they haven't been able to do that because of COVID and D N R for the last couple of years, so this is the first time we have.
Well, that's great.
What did she?
Yeah, that's so great.
Okay, well, we got a motion in a second, all of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Hey, everybody.